Next we'll take comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move along to any amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments tonight, David?
Yeah, I want to add, under the superintendent's report, I want to add a temporary fund transfer agreement from the city, and we'll explain when we get there.
Okay.
And other than that, we're good.
All right. Next up is announcements and student representative report. Delaney, you're on, on your very second meeting, all by yourself.
This Friday, it's Tuesday, so we're going to have a late start this Friday. French Exchange students are going to be leaving, going back to France. Also SB's Got Talent will be happening, that starts at 7:00. Just this past weekend, the new food shelf on Dorset opened, which is really awesome. Also, November 11th, we'll be having a Veterans Day Assembly, and the 22nd and the 23rd will be the High School Musical, so Beauty and the Beast.
Excellent. What time is the Veterans Day Assembly, do you know?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, okay. Okay. Anyone else have any announcements?
Yes, I have a couple, just quick ones. The Vermont School Boards Association and the Vermont Superintendent's Association has their fall conference, and that's tomorrow and Friday down at Lake Maury. And again, we'll be talking a little bit about some of the resolution components connected to that meeting. So if people want to take a look at the agenda, most of the meetings, annual meetings, will happen tomorrow afternoon down at Lake Maury for the VSBA and the VSA. And a follow-up to Delaney's thing on the TIE, we've been hosting the students from Perrigaud, and this is the 40th year that they've been, we've been partnering back and forth. And I did have the chance to host folks at my house for kind of a, you know, a welcome from all the folks that come from TIE. And many of our past staffs, so Tim Khan and his wife, and Bob Shermer and his wife, and many others that were, had been part of it in the past years, were able to say hello and celebrate kind of the lives that they've affected over the years. So it was nice.
That's great. Okay, if there are no other announcements, we'll move on to city and school collaboration.
Richard, can you turn that down just a tad? So Steering Committee, last night, we actually hosted, right here, City Council, School Board, which is our Steering Committee, and we had senators and legislators. And this is the first time that we've done it, actually, in the evening. Most all of our other meetings have been at, in the morning, Legislative Breakfast. And I have to say that this was one of the best-attended events that we've ever had, and we were able to go through a multitude of items and issues that we're concerned about, or watching, or inquiring about, and so that was really good. Prior to that, on the 28th of October, we had another Steering Committee meeting, and that was at the high school, it was in the library. Again, City Council, School Board, and community members who were able to come, got a little update on master planning and visioning was the primary focus, and then to be able to take a tour of the building so that there would be a little bit more, you got some visitors in the back there, that were, or perhaps uninformed about what kind of, you know, what kind of facility people were talking about. So again, we did get some responses that it was helpful to be more informed. So city-school collaboration, we have some upcoming meetings planned with the city leadership, again, School Board Chair, myself, Kevin Dorn and Helen Reilly, scheduled to get together.
Okay.
So that's city-school. I don't know, again, based on any feedback from board members around any of those meetings?
And I guess we'll hear a little bit more about that in the next item, too, with regard to Market Street and whatnot. Okay. Any other things? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So first item is the Rick Marcot School. So again, Rick Marcot Central School and 180 Market. Let's be clear about 180 Market Street. 180 Market Street is not yet built. It's the location which will be the library, city offices, and senior facility that will be located on 180 Market. This was the land transfer that happened from the school. So here to talk a little bit about, to update you on the Rick Marcot property, Gary's going to give us a little update. Thanks, Gary.
Okay, you know, keeping with the theme of city and school collaboration, we've been doing quite a bit of work at 180 Market. Couple of things that we've done this past week is we verified with Engelberg Surveyor that the layout of the entire property on the easement portion was exactly to the specifications of the plans that the School Board approved. So that was a pretty interesting project. They did a good job. Everything was within like a half an inch. Pretty amazing technology that they use. On top of that, so we've identified during that process, the number of total parking spots that we will, we will lose during the construction period. And we worked with Justin Rabidu, the Director of Public Works for the city, Mark Tighe, the Engelberg General Contractor Representative, and we have designed a temporary gravel parking lot to the east of the existing eastern parking lot at Rick Marcot, to be constructed over the next three weeks or so. It covers, it's built on the footprint of what will be the future full finished parking lot, eastern parking lot at Rick Marcot, which will happen in Phase 3 of the 180 Market Street project. So it looks like our estimate is about, room for about 44 cars in that lot. Moving the fence to a temporary location inside of the trees so we can maintain those trees throughout this phase of the project. Connecting to our existing fence, it's actually moving that existing fence to the east to accommodate this lot. We worked with our plowing contractor for Rick Marcot. That is really a wash as far as cost. It won't cost us anymore because they won't be plowing
Some of the other spaces.
From the other spaces that we traditionally plowed, so no cost there. And Justin has agreed in principle that this is a reasonable accommodation, and that it shouldn't cost the school district anything to get this put in. So it's better than parking across the street, and I hope the staff, you know, and families at Rick Marcot will be relieved that they don't, they don't have to have too much inconvenience during this process. So the diagram that is at your place kind of shows the location.
I have a question about the temporary access road. Is that the same footprint of the new bus loop, the permanent one that will go in eventually?
It is.
Okay. Okay.
Gary, can you just speak a little bit to, it says deleted parking area? I mean, that's not going to be needed, right?
So that's, that deleted parking area, it was part of the original city's 180 Market Street to do the construction staging there that was going to be fenced. They could not reach agreement with the landowner to use that. So they have deleted that area. So there'll be no construction equipment parked next to the access road, which is probably a plus for us. But they are using the funds that they dedicated to building that construction staging area and temporary gravel parking lot to assist us in having our temporary parking lot.
And they're going to work maybe to park their vehicles in a
Across the street.
Across the street, which is what used to be the old Chinese place, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
I know, that's not really the right, I'm wrong to keep saying that because it isn't the Chinese place anymore, but that used to be. I think it's actually apartments now. But I don't want to mislead people.
It's directly to the west of the current Market Street Construction Project offices.
Yep.
And on that note, Market Street is on schedule for my meeting on Tuesday, on schedule for the ribbon cutting at 11 o'clock on the 13th, and opening of the actual Market Street in its finished state on the 15th.
Thanks, Gary. I don't know if board members have any questions. Again, a lot of activity going on here. Gary's been doing a great job to keep, you know, make sure we're on target, and survey stuff is on Brent Coon. Again, this is also part of the work, is making sure families are informed as this process begins. You can see where the old entrance is. It's literally almost the same spot where it starts, but it goes, it goes far off to the right. And we're just, again, there's been fences, fences have been moved currently, and we're going to, as Gary said, we're going to start to see a lot more activity here pretty quick. The parking lot obviously won't be paved, the temporary parking lot, but I think what you say, Gary, is it's like crushed.
It'll be compacted crust gravel, so it'll be plowable by our plowing contractor. Marcus has committed to temporary lines, so people can get used to how the parking will be configured in there before it gets covered with snow.
Yep.
One question I had is, do we have a sense of what the city is planning to try to get done over the winter, and what will be left for spring? Just so we have a sense of what the activity will look like on their parcel?
So I have a sense, but the detailed Engelberg construction meetings that we will attend start in about two weeks from now, so we'll get a better idea. But they will start with site work. I am not sure, at one point, they were going to try to get footings in before the ground got too frozen. So I'll have more from Engelberg in about two weeks.
And again, we've kept this, as most people know, we've kept this on our agenda just to make sure, you know, we're keeping people in the loop. So we'll continue to do that. Thanks, Gary.
Reason didn't stop them from putting Allard Square's foundation in, so.
Yeah, there's definitely different ways they can do it, but preferably, they'd like not to do that.
Well, it's just that there's a lot to do before they can even do that, because they have to move the access into Allard Square, which is a big project. And then, my understanding from meetings with the city is that there were a lot of utilities and things that are underneath that right now, that are going to have to be moved and all that. And I just wondered what they were hoping to attempt before it really froze over.
Those structures are the first thing that are going to happen in the next couple of weeks. There's a structure at the intersection of Market and School, so there will be one day that will have one lane access, even while they're building the temporary road, because there's a structure right in that, in the east side of that intersection that they've got to dig down like eight or 10 feet to mitigate stormwater.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary. Any other questions on 180? So moving on, Chamberlain, really don't have anything more to update you on, any significant changes on the grants, as far as update on status or where we are. The one thing that we are, and we talked about this last night at the Steering Committee meeting collectively, was the 10% match on the total price. And so, again, we don't know what that total price is. We're informed that we're obligated to the 10%, and we're essentially saying, you know, that's not something we're, you know, wanting to do. We don't think that's appropriate. So we're, again, I think it's been heard pretty loudly around, you know, our different, through our different representatives, and we've expressed that to airport management, and we'll continue to wait for a response there. So again, I don't know if there's any questions related to that. Hearing none. I want to just, again, what I amended the agenda to was to include the temporary fund transfer agreement. It's by your place. And I did sign it. I signed it yesterday. And again, Amity and Gary and I want to just make sure you're informed about it. Again, under policy governance, we think this was appropriate for me to sign, but wanted to inform you. And so basically, for us to make payroll, you know that we have on occasions had to go out with a tax anticipation note. And instead of doing that, the city, through collaboration with Amity and Gary, to the city, said, "We can help you with that." So this temporary fund transfer agreement came up at a half a percent in interest for 10 days, and before we get the next amount of tax money in. So it's $385, is that right?
Yeah.
Of interest. And I don't know if you have any particular questions. Again, we're bringing it up really as, just to inform you. I don't know if there's, we do think that this is going to start to happen more and more. We shared some of the concerns and questions. Again, a lot of it is some of the state funding mechanisms, also just the, you know, our budget's much tighter than it has been in the past. We don't have a fund balance, or a lot of contingency in there as well. So we were able to do that much more easily. Go ahead, Amity.
Well, just as a note, and why this kind of happens quicker than we thought, is we are still waiting for the special ed funds that are over a million dollars still being held by the state, because they've had a transition to a new Director of the Special Ed Finance, and he's learning, and it's taken him much longer to reconcile the year-end FY19. So that, along with, we still are waiting for some of our grant funds to come that we've requested. So that was, it's about a million and a half dollars that we've been waiting on and thought we might have, and not have to do any borrowing ahead of the tax transfer. But unfortunately, it just got too tight.
Historically, we probably have it about 60 days earlier than we do, than we will get it this year.
Quite a bit later this year.
It was great that the city was willing to work with us.
Yeah, and it saved, you know, the taxpayers at least probably a $700 or $800 difference, because it's usually about a $1,200 interest expense when we have to go to the banks to borrow. So it was wonderful that their, yeah, collaboration came about.
I do think it's worthy to note, I mean, with AOE, I mean, these are some of the unintended or intended consequences of transitions and/or lack of clarity, personnel movement, things like that, that are probably, this won't be the last kind of thing. So important for us to keep note, this is probably $385 that we wouldn't have had to spend on interest, but nonetheless, where we are. Thank you, Amity and Gary.
Okay. So I think that wraps up the superintendent's report. We'll move on to item eight, consider ratification of agreement between the South Burlington School Board and the South Burlington Administrators Association. And this is warrant for action. I believe Martin's going to give us a brief update.
So we had a fairly late start in sitting down and starting negotiations with the administrators. So we really both agreed, both sides agreed, to really keep it as focused as possible. The agreement has a couple fairly minor language changes, just to clear up a couple ambiguities. The main thing that we focused on was the salary, and where we landed is that the, in this agreement, just real quickly, it covers nine individuals, the South Burlington High School Principal, the two Assistant Principals at the high school, the Tuttle School Principal, and the Assistant Principal of Tuttle School, the Student Activities Director, and then the three elementary principals. So they all are receiving a step increase, and in addition to that, a base increase of 1.56%, which is a little bit less than the CPI. So that amounts to approximately a 3.77% overall total compensation. And that's pretty much what we agreed to, and not really too many other details. So.
Am I understanding as if they ratified? Do you know when?
Yes, yes, and they ratified today, earlier today.
So does anyone have any questions, comments? If not, do I have a motion to ratify the agreement between the South Burlington School Board and the South Burlington Administrators Association?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Great, thanks.
Okay, moving on to master planning and visioning update.
You want to take a shot?
[laughing]
I mean, you got it, you got it so well down.
Work is continuing. So we, as David said earlier, we had a Steering Committee on October 28th, so not this past Monday, but the Monday before, which was really focused on master planning and visioning. So the City Council got an update on the plans and had a tour of the high school, and we had some discussion both before and after. And then we had, our most recent working group meeting was on October 30th, where we met a lot of new team members to the working group. And, yep, and then we had, today, we met with our financial advisor for the first time since we hired them. So they sort of gave us a request for information, so they can really get started on some financial modeling, and we'll be meeting with them every couple of weeks as we move forward. And that is kind of, Dormwood here will be at our next meeting. We'll put this on the agenda for our next meeting when we get to that part of this agenda. They will come at that stage, they should have pretty close to finalized, because the 22nd, a few days later, they will present a design to the cost estimator and to the pre-construction services company to do a final cost estimate for the board. And so they're going to come on the 20th to our board meeting and give us an update of where they got to. In the meantime, there'll probably be another couple of meetings before then, just to answer some of their questions and make some adjustments to the design before they come to us on the 20th. Any other updates?
No. Again, Lee kind of confirmed that. I talked with him briefly today, you know, that they're working hard to meet that November 22nd, that he thinks that they'll have a pretty comprehensive update on the 20th. So they've been working hard to take in all the feedback that they've received from public, from staff, administrators, board, et cetera, and trying to pull that all together. So.
Okay.
I think the only other relevant is that there are going to be displays at the PTOs next week, right, on Monday and Tuesday? So Monday at Orchard and Tuesday at Chamberlain and Central, I believe?
That's right.
At 6:00 or 6:30, something.
Yep.
Yep. And probably there are different times in which we'll get there, but I think we're on all the agendas to try to make sure that we give opportunity for parents, community members, to ask questions, be informed, or be informed and be able to ask questions, et cetera. So we're kind of dividing that up a little bit, so figuring that out.
Yeah, yeah. Emails have gone around, but it'll be, so on, Chamberlain will be at 6:10 PM on Tuesday. And Rick Marcot, the meeting starts at 6:30, but master planning and visioning portion will start at 7:00, because they're going to do other business before that. Orchard will be on Monday
At 6:30, I think.
At 6:30, yes.
That's right.
So that's where we are. So there'll be Dormwood here folks, Pat Burke, Carsten, and some combination of David and I at those meetings. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Moving on to executive limitations policy, monitoring, both of these are warrant for action. As of 2.4, we're bringing back for a second time.
Yep, so I'll kick that off. Obviously, we brought, this has come before you once before, where we provided you with kind of, we went over the entire policy. We indicated to you where we had non-compliance. We had received several questions prior to that meeting. By your place are those questions, and Amity, Gary, and I provided some responses. In addition, we've had some meeting conversations with both Elizabeth and Bridget regarding their questions, specific to the revenue shortfall, answering some questions on how that occurred, and those are noted in your packet, highlighted in blue. And again, what I would like to suggest is that we go over the specific, because we went over the, again, you can do whatever you want here, but I would suggest that you go over the detailed policy that was not in compliance, and you review the, you review the compliance plan, and then you do the overall policy as well. And that's noted on your, in your packet in the monitoring report process. Also note, in your, by your place, there was a compliance plan that went out. It's slightly different, modified by your place. Still five items, but there's a slight difference in that, in that number four is determine the needed resources to address identified shortcomings after examining and evaluating the various processes and procedures. So what would be your pleasure, I guess, Bridget and board, on how you'd like to do this? It's really at your.
I guess I've had the benefit of sitting down and really asking a lot of questions of Amity and Gary. I don't know if other board members have questions. So we're talking about detail policy one of financial condition and activities policy 2.4. So detail policy one is expend more funds than have been received or budgeted in the fiscal year to date. And I don't know if anyone has any specific questions. I know this packet that sort of lists questions and answers to them, and Amity's and Gary's good analysis was in our packets. So I don't know if anyone has any questions for David, or Amity, or Gary.
I mean, I guess one that jumps out at me, so you were talking about the addition of number four, determine the needed resources. So is that meant to address sort of the last paragraph on page nine of the questions that were asked? It says the office of finance is not staffed sufficiently, funded on the 20 budget hasn't been filled.
Yeah, so I think, you know, one of the things that you're seeing is that particularly given AOE, which we mentioned earlier, the ability to keep on top of some of the revenue streams that are coming in, we recognize that the current staffing levels, which we've not significantly changed in many years, there's needed resources to make sure that information is coming in so that the work can be done to ensure that, number one, we're staying in check, and/or as we build budgets, to be able to be best informed about how we want to do that going forward. A big component of this revenue shortfall was related to the revenue side, related to tuition. And part of that was, I think, tied to the variability connected to tuition, i.e. the number of students, then the number of students that come to us, the number that might go off to vocational, or the number that might go to dual enrollment or early college. We typically, in the past years, were very conservative as we've gone through. We've tried to be less conservative, and I definitely, this is a year coupled with the budget going down as it did, we had two no votes back in this period when we were building. So when we set that rate, it did not take into account a more reflective rate. So again, with staff, one of the things that's critically important with the workload, and again, you've heard from us on some of the things that are concerning. One is chart of account change by AOE. Another is a handbook that advises you on where you put things. The other is e-finance, which we're going to have to all comply to. We did get a waiver, actually, that's not really a waiver, but we were in, there's rounds of implementation. You're either in round one, two, three, I don't know actually, a number of rounds, but we were in a round that was to implement now, and we requested through the secretary, given all of the things that are going on, to go into the next round. Again, a lot of that, as you know, if you have to fully change your system, is going to take a breadth of additional people. Some of what we're talking about right here is how do we manage that influx? Again, something that I think has been significantly absent, you know, around implementation in the legislature, is that all of those activities, or those acts, or actions, have impact on our ability to respond. And again, a chart of accounts, you know, a handbook that's not yet done, so we're kind of in the blind, and a whole e-finance program, which you have to build a budget on, which And a whole e-finance program, which you have to build a budget on, which Amity's been eloquent about talking about around, you know, we're trying to, you're trying to change the game, and we've got to build a budget now, right? And we're lucky that we are in, and we, we got pushed to the next round. But nonetheless, we're still going to have to do that work. So additional staffing will be needed.
And it has already been approved, right? I guess what I'm asking is why hasn't it been filled? Is that partly to make up for the shortfall?
Well, I think, you know, from my perspective...
Because the checks and balances are great, but you've got to be able to staff it to do it, you know?
That's right. And so my, my, my desire is to make sure we're looking at all of the areas that might be in need. Again, I said chart of accounts, and I said the, the specifics around e-finance plus the, the need to look at all of our data coming in and account for it. So we recognize that, that we need, we've, we've been partially filling, I'll be a little bit in trouble here. We've been partially filling some of those with some, some support, but nowhere near enough. And so we know that, we know that there's needed support. So...
But we could hire for that immediately within the budget that we have?
Yeah, we can, but again, I'm also wanting to make sure that that addresses the specific area, and that's why processes and procedures in number four are, you know, are specifically mentioned in there.
So I, I guess as we go into budget season, I know, Amity, you would kind of give me the bullet points of what will be different going into this budget season. So it might be helpful, just for those who didn't get to sit down directly with you, to sort of hear what those like four or five bullet points and how we'll do things differently going into this budget season. That'd be helpful, I think.
Yeah, so we, we recognize tuition being a very unknown variable at times, and then having kind of gone less conservative in our track. We, we want to set up a procedure where we do a look back, probably about a five-year look back, get an average, look at those that we build at a full-time rate versus those that are not at the full-time rate, and try to actually finalize some sort of procedure and then put in a, like a variable percentage that we might subtract just to allow for some of those unknowns that might come and we can't predict. So we're going to put those procedures into place, we'll have them written down. So our successors will also understand how it was that we came about these numbers and hope that that is much, you know, more succinct in our process. Then we'll be working closer with the data team. Every, you know, couple of weeks, we can touch base with them and see if anything significant has changed with our tuition student numbers. We also have a staffing, a person on staff in the guidance office who, at the high school, who works specifically with our tuition student group. And so she is a pretty good account of who, you know, has said they probably will be coming. Now, again, if we build in some of those percentages to allow for maybe those that change their mind before they actually come in the fall, but it gives us a much better accounting. And so I think having learned our lesson of what things to look for, it will help us to really sit, solidify some procedures that will take us to a better place. And then we've been talking with our auditors and how we've actually even just in the last three days, after they've done the audit work and left, even in the last three days, we found with the state, we're going to have more revenue from special ed than we had booked on our 2019 financials. So there's been some additions already to revenue that, when they left, didn't even, we were unknown. So our deficit should be a lower number than what I've given to you at this report even, but we don't know that final number, but we're hoping it'll be closer to the 500 number instead of the seven. And I did also speak with the auditor about any amount of money that they think we should be considering moving into each budget cycle as a contingency or, you know, sort of fund balance, maybe to hang on to is so that it does stabilize your taxes a little bit. He was talking of a 3% number maybe of your total budget. Now, that's not something we can probably get to immediately, but, you know, it's a, it's a number to possibly work toward. So we'll be keeping that in mind as we go forward.
As we talk through the budget process this year.
Exactly, yeah. So those are, and I don't know if there's anything I missed in any of that?
I think, I think one of the biggest actual philosophical changes is, is there will be checks and balances. There'll be a, there'll be a single input source for the budget, and that will be the business manager. There will no longer be, we will not allow multiple entities to input budget. And then every input will be checked by me. So the process will feed from, the people who give the business manager the input will make the requests. They'll be validated and input by the business manager, and I will validate those inputs and check back with the person who provided them originally to make sure that, that there are none of the errors that happened in 19 will happen in the future.
I guess that was part of my question for David too. You know, you have these checks and balances in place. It sounds like you're pretty confident that with the people that you have right now, I mean, you're all working too damn much anyway, but you, you can do the stuff that we're talking about.
And we truly did it in 20 as well. So, I mean, we're actually working on a budget that we actually did those procedures in, but, you know, we didn't realize the impact as significant as it ended. You know, at that time when we were building 20, we knew it was going to be a very tight budget season, but we didn't realize that it would be that case, but...
You've heard of the volatility pieces that we have going on. And there's some added pressures on that volatility, which leads to the, the kind of equation of conservatism that Amity talked about, and, you know, early college, vocational, technical. Again, that's all great that we want kids to be able to have those choices, but, you know, we kind of think this will be the number, right? So 180 kids will come to, from tuition. But of those 180, based on kind of our current run rate, is how many might go half-day Burlington? They might change to full-day Essex? Oop, they might actually do early college? All that changes the game for us in the immediate when we've set a budget, you know, well before, right? That was, went before the voters. And now we're, now we're trying to play that based on what we can, we think we can get. So there's still going to be some high-level variability. But again, we think, you know, getting more mathematical. I mean, some people would just say, yes, getting more conservative, but I think as Amity pointed out, there's a math equation that would be able to be...
Because the head count of tuition students has been fairly flat over the last several years, right? But the sort of FTE students, like, has that been sort of a steady decline? Or is it too, too few data points to know? I mean...
No, I, I think we can definitely identify a trend that we have been, over the last three years anyway, we've had fewer and fewer full-tuition paying students because the options have been, been getting, you know, more varied. They can do early college, they can do dual enrollment, you know. So, so those, you know, we're, we're going to analyze that trend, and then we're going to take a, a data-educated guess on the amount of revenue we'll receive in August of '21 that will actually provide the revenue of the budget that we're planning now.
I mean, I think important, I mean, obviously, you've got an expense and a revenue piece, and I think you've heard throughout most of the year, or last year, around expense concerns. And again, Amity, Gary, and their team are, are watchful. And we had an early warning about kind of our concerns around expense. And so we never want to deny, you know, the students what was promised to, from our community and the budget. But some of the areas where we can recognize savings and not, or not do, were, were part of the conversations. And so there's a lot of diligence in that area. But we also felt like there's some expectations that come from the agency, you know, that money is due to us. And what we've, what we have found is, you know, just like Amity pointed out with special ed revenue reimbursement, we, we don't, we don't get that. And that has become less planned, which is als, which is also pointing, is to say, we, we got to be paying attention here. And again, you're seeing some of that, as Amity said, around the, kind of the tax anticipation note or in this, the, the fund transfer from the city. Had we had the, the money, then we probably wouldn't be in that. So the game is changing a little bit, and, or I would say the, the job is becoming more complex, you know, to try to balance all of those variabilities that are out there.
Yes.
I have three questions. When, what's the latest amount, dollar amount of tuition dollars we're getting from external students? It used to be about a little bit under 3 million. Is it still about a little bit under 3 million? I'll tell you what the number was for the FY '19.
Yeah, I'd be guessing, I'd say it's right in that three.
Just from tuition students, not, not including special education, it was 2.4 million last fiscal year.
Okay, and did we ever figure out a dollar? I mean, average for the last three years is 175 students, so that's about a lot. Can't do the math quickly, probably in the $15,000 range, something like that.
Rough, that's a good number, 15...
Second question, does that many come from on Pelear, from the education fund, as opposed to the sending community sending the money here? I guess it comes from the education fund, but that's a question I have.
Comes from the sending community.
Comes to the sending community. So, so any, whether it's the Island community or Georgia primarily, that's our makeup, that money is coming to us directly from those districts for tuition.
Okay, so the last question is, the tax rate in Georgia, for instance, okay? Would that be the tax rate? Would the person who's sending a child to this community from Georgia, would their tax rate be the Georgia tax rate or would be the South Burlington?
Georgia tax rate. Yeah, they set the tax rate based on their anticipated...
So they're providing for their community no matter where their student goes?
Yeah, and they have a little volatility too because announced tuition rates, you know, although, I mean, the variability there may not be significant. I don't, I don't want to quote what they are, but they, they'll likely quote, you know, a conservative amount to say, you know, 15.3 or 15.4. I, I don't, I don't exactly know. You, yeah, Gary probably...
Gary could give us some insight on that.
So in, in the sending communities, we, we, we do the same thing. We look at historical data, we look at the number of students that attend each receiving district, and then we calculate based on the allowable tuition from the year before to determine how much we're going to resource. And then we account for volatility by adding a variable percentage for people who make different choices. So for the variability, if, if 30 kids went to Colchester this year and that jumped to 20 kids to Colchester and then 30 kids to Essex, we build some variability in to account for increases in, in our students' choices.
So the reason I bring it up, just so the board understands why I'm asking a question, if the bond should pass, the tax rate in South Burlington has to go up. I mean, we have to pay for that school. 20% of your high school population, by my calculation, 19%, if I want to be accurate, okay, comes from external communities. Their tax rate is not going up because we're building a school.
Yes, it will.
Yeah, well, it will.
They'll have to because they're announced the rate, the tuition rate.
Yes, tax rate will go up because there's a statewide tax rate base.
No, no.
Because tuition will go up.
They'll have to budget accordingly for tuition, which will be higher for us than it will be for...
Yes, but you just said the Georgia tax rate is the Georgia tax rate.
Georgia makes a budget, and part of that budget is what they estimate they're going to spend on sending kids to other districts. So they make this calculation that says we have, you know, maybe 20 students at $15,000 a student that we're going to send out somewhere. That's one part of their school budget. And then they, just like us, have an equalized pupil number and, and all of that, and they end up with a homestead property tax rate. And so that homestead property tax rate is going to have to reflect whatever the tuition is that they get billed for those students. They're going to estimate what that tuition is.
I think to Gary's point, the allowable rate, so again, new school gets built. Incurd additional expense, they're, in that example, they'll, they'll say, we want to not only look at allowable tuition of the previous year, but what the announced tuition rate will be for the year forward. And they'll look at those two and say, hey, we've got, you know, 100 kids that are going, and we think 50 are going to come here, we're going to have to adjust our budget based on, you know, the, the number of students that are coming to South Burlington, we think, at that rate. And so they may increase their budget accordingly to, to, to fit that need. And again, this could, the variability in any of those communities can, can significantly change.
So tuition, the tuition that we will be charging or allowed to charge, not the situation, will go up?
Because of our debt service.
I think, but I don't, I don't see how it's possible. You're, you're amortizing the cost of the bond over...
30 years.
No, no. So you've decided 30 years on that?
We haven't decided.
Okay, fine, fine. Okay, that's not, over a much larger resident population, that would be true for Georgia. You're, you're spreading off, you're spreading that cost over a much larger group of individuals. That won't be true for Georgia. Let you remember, Georgia has to pay for their school system. So I, I, I can't believe that their tax rate is going to go the same as ours because then their tax rate would be impacting a much larger, all the individuals in Georgia. The tax rate is stable for everybody in Georgia, just like the tax rate is stable for everybody in South Burlington. They couldn't possibly raise the tax rate in Georgia to the same degree we'll be raising it here.
Well, again, ours is going to need to factor in the funding mechanism, whatever that is, right? So to build the new school and, and the implications of the bonding structure. So it will be, yes, in year one, whatever that is. And our, our announced tuition rate will have to be in coordination with that. So on, and every year, that, that fluctuate, it's going to transfer to us establishing an announced tuition with all of our sending, all of our ascending schools.
So if you just, if you did a 20-year bond, no interest whatsoever, zero, $210 million, paying it back over 20 years, you're going to bump up our tax rate by 25%. Using your own figures, David, because South Burlington, with the education fund kicking in, your figure's $40,442,293. You add $10.5 million to that, you're increasing it 25%. That's no interest. Tax rate has to go up. There's only two figures to calculate the education assessment in South Burlington. It's tax rate times grand list. That, those are the two figures. If you bump up the tax rate by 25%, that's a big hit, okay? That's why I'm so concerned. There's no way Georgia's going to bump their tax rate up by 25% because that would generate more, much more money than they need for their own educational community. I think this is something you have to look at. There's no way, there's no way it's going to be...
I'm not able to totally follow you, but...
I, I think I followed it pretty closely, and, and you, you are correct that their tax rate won't go up as much. How we will handle it, right, in a sending district, we will, we will calculate our estimate of how much South Burlington's tuition's going to go up, and we will calculate our estimate of the number of students that will be attending South Burlington, and we will increase our expense budget accordingly. So we will allocate more money for two reasons. One, because the tuition will be higher, and we will be able to figure out roughly what that increase will be. And then we will factor in historical change data. When, when anybody does a renovation, when any receiving school does a renovation, in our experience, the subsequent years, the increases of, in the number of, of our students that go to that school goes up by a percentage. We'll calculate that percentage. We have 50 kids coming to South Burlington. When the new school is built, we'll probably have 75. So those are the kind of, of calculations that we'll take into increasing our budget. Our taxpayers in the, in the sending schools will have to bear that portion of the increased cost.
I think your model, I mean, you're, you're right on, you know, again, part of this, Bridget said, the financial advisors, you know, to help us to be able to more, to, to clearly articulate implications and impact to the community, you know, is, we, we recognize is absolutely needed. I mean, I think right now, we're, 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 we're generalizing the implications that might exist in any, any of our communities, right? And Gary says, you know, right now, there's variability in, in the sendings because sometimes it's X to Colchester, X to Essex, X to South Burlington. That may significantly change. There's volatility there too. And so we recognize that we're going to need to, you know, from our sending schools to our community, be able to articulate all of kind of the, the impact as clear as we can. And, I mean, I, I, you, you're providing some kind of, you know, back-of-the-napkin information. I'm not able to 100% track your, your, your thinking at the moment on the, on the numbers, but...
$210 million divided by 20 years.
Yeah, I, I get that, Jerry, and again, you're, again, that's...
The only way you can do it is what I would call the way the car dealers do it. No, no, no. You can buy a new car and drive off, drive the car off the lot and pay no money down for one year or two years, okay? And that's a teaser loan. That, that gets you excited because you're not paying anything upfront. But you're going to pay later on. So there's lots of ways, and this is the variable interest rate mortgage, which was part of the reason there was a collapse in 2018. People were taking on mortgage loans, which they simply couldn't afford to pay. And the reason they were able to get it is because there was no money down, low interest at the beginning. And as soon as those interest rates went up, they collapsed. So the point I'm making to you is, I think there's an inequality here, which you're not going to be able to do away with as long as you have 19% of your... which you're not gonna be able to do away with as long as you have nineteen percent of your students coming from other communities which have a different tax rate. It, it's gonna be there. And what it means, David, is in South Burlington where eighty percent of residents have no children in the school system, they're actually gonna be paying more for the new construction, even though they have no children in the school system, than households in Georgia who are sending students here are going to be paying. I mean, that's just an inequality which you can't get away from as long as it's true that the family in Georgia, a single family, who sends a child to the South Burlington school system has a tax rate which all residents in Georgia have. In other words, the people who send students from Georgia to South Burlington, they don't get a unique tax rate, they get the Georgia tax rate. As long as that's true, they will be paying less for their child's education, not only compared to South Burlington families who have children in the school system, but compared to families in South Burlington who have no children in the school system. David, I, I've worked this through my mind a lot of times, I've challenged myself left and right. It's an inequality, you're not gonna be able to erase. If you had one or two students from Georgia, I would say, it's not worth worrying about. You have twenty percent of your high school population. That means you have a real inequality with a real number. I don't think it's irrelevant, David, I really don't. Now, I don't know how to fix it.
I, I didn't say it was irrelevant. I, I mean, but.
So I asked.
We wanna dig into the, and make sure we're clear on, and be able to explain how that affects sending school communities as well as our resident population. And I think, you know, different obviously than the car dealership, we have potential grand list growth, right, over the period of time, which is different for, you know. So again, I think some of those, those factors also need to be, and again, I wanna go right back to the financial advisor, people that have been part of this type of structured funding, and to help us, you know, be able to articulate with as much precision as we can kind of the, the current variables in play.
I don't think your financial advisor can deal with the Georgia issue, the external student issue. That's a separate issue.
We've, we've heard your comment. Thank you, Jerry. I think we need to move on with our agenda.
You do this every time, Bridgette, you do this every time. As soon as a big issue comes up, which there's not an answer which is beneficial to you, you say, and Helen did it the same thing, when I, when I bring up the issue, you took a picture of this room with the lights off, and she then said, okay, you've talked about enough. You keep on doing this, you're turning on important issues.
But you continue to make the same point, and we disagree, we disagree with you, and we will explain it more clearly with pictures and charts and graphs so that it can be articulated more clearly. We don't have that presentation with us tonight. You keep repeating the same point over and over, unless you have something else to comment on or another question that's different than that one, we need to move on with the agenda.
You're way ahead of your agenda.
Well, we were.
But we're spinning, we're spinning with the same question. We're spinning with the same question, so.
We're dealing with tuition students, so I raised a question about tuition students.
Well, somehow this morphed into a master planning and vision with a new, new construction, which is number nine.
Well, I think he's asking, it's in the revenue side, so.
Yeah.
It's a relevant question, but Gary, who sits on a school board in a sending district, has explained to you how this will impact their taxes and how there is not an inequality. The state has a very complex, very complex equation to make sure that no one's profiting from tuition students and no one's losing money on tuition students. It is set up to be a fair system within a percentage point or two because it can't be precise to the dollar, but very, very close to being, we get paid what it is costing us as a district to educate that, those students that come to our district from other districts. We've had this discussion many, many, many times over the years. We've dug into the, the equation many, many times, and we will do it again as we present what we expect the impact to be here. And we need to present that impact so that Georgia and the Islands can understand what the impact is likely to be. But this school funding, the mechanism to fund the new building, whatever it is, will factor into that tuition rate, and they will be paying their fair share. Who cares what their overall tax rate is in Georgia? If they are paying their fair share of what it costs to pay the teachers, to pay for the new building, to pay for what their students are getting out of our system, it doesn't matter to me what their city tax is or what their other school taxes to fund their elementary schools or those kinds of, it doesn't matter to me. What matters to me as a school board representative and as a, as a citizen of South Burlington is that those students are paying their fair share. And there are many mechanisms in place to make sure that that is happening.
With all due respect, you don't understand the point I was making. By what you just said, Bridgette, you don't understand the point I was just making, okay? I'll stop there. You did not listen to me because you were processing the information the way you saw a fit according to your paradigm. You didn't listen to my question. There is only one way to calculate the tax assessment of a resident in South Burlington. You multiply the tax rate times the grand list, that's the value of their homestead. That's the only calculation. Look at your city tax bill. If Georgia has a tax rate which is unique to Georgia, okay? Their tax rate is not going to change to the same degree that the tax rate in South Burlington will change. That's, I, I can say that's true. Now, we may compensate by charging Georgia more, but the household in Georgia, their tax assessment is going to be based upon multiplying the tax rate in Georgia times the assessed value of the resident's home state. There are only two variables in calculating how much I owe to South Burlington. What's the tax rate in South Burlington, and what's the assessed value of my home? It's the same thing in Georgia. If Georgia has one tax rate, I guarantee you that the cost to me with this new bond is gonna be different than the Georgia household which is sending a student here. You can't escape that reality. I'll stop there. You didn't understand the point I was trying to make. I understand that Georgia may increase the amount of tuition dollars they'll send here, but it comes to pass that I'll be paying more for the new school because of the increase in the tax rate than a family in Georgia which is sending a child to the school system in South Burlington. I guarantee.
Families in Georgia currently pay less in taxes yet get the benefit of our school.
Sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
Families in Georgia currently pay less in taxes yet can have the benefit of using our school.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
That will continue to be true.
But, but if a hundred percent of, of South Burlington students came from Georgia, they would bear a hundred percent of the cost.
Yeah, if, if, in theory, if Georgia were to close all of its schools and tuition all of them to South Burlington, they would, in theory, you know, other things, a little few other details, they would have the same tax rate as we do.
Correct.
The school portion, right?
The school portion, forget the municipal part.
There's the municipal portion, but yeah.
And currently, Jerry, about half of the Georgia kids go to BFA St. Almond's as well, and they also, I don't, don't think they send very many, if one or two, middle school kids to South Burlington. So, they're not gonna be charged the capital debt part for the middle school. They're gonna charge, the, the tuition rate is gonna reflect the, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but the construction costs of the high school. So we're gonna, we're buying a, you know, we're considering buying a middle school and a high school, but Georgia's only interested in the high school.
Again, I think, I think, you know, Jerry's, his point is, is around inequity, and I think, you know, right? Jerry, that's your, your point, and I think we need to be able to.
Tears of inequity. It's comparing the family in Georgia with a child, sending them to South Burlington to a family in South Burlington with a child. That's one inequity. Then, there's the inequity of the family in Georgia compared to the South Burlington residents who have no children in the school system. They're making a greater contribution to the school system.
I think it's, we'll, we'll.
I just think it's something that should be discussed.
We're, we're, we hear you, we, we're, we'll, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're on two-point-four.
We're still on two-point-four. I have a question for you, which is, I mean, do we have any other questions about?
Two-four.
Two-four? Or are we ready to take action on that? I believe we're ready to take action on it unless anyone has any other specific questions. One question I have is that because this was brought back, the two-point-four that was in our packet did not include our monitoring.
Checklist?
Checklist. Do we have a monitoring checklist for two-point-four? Do you have one from a previous thing?
Yeah, Martin.
Martin's organized, thank you.
I, I did have one quick question. I thought that, that we were going for, that the administration, that David was going to perhaps revisit an interpretation.
We did.
Yes. I believe it was.
Yeah, I see it.
Four?
It's policy number ten.
Ten.
The district will accept only tuition students.
Oh, yes, correct. The language was, yeah, it said all, and we changed it to only.
I would've put the only before except, but that's fine.
I think you've, why, already.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, I know what you're saying.
You can move the only next time.
I think it's fine where it is. I think it's fine where it is.
Grammar.
So we'll have that argument next time, we'll, yeah, we'll move on.
It does, it's.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ma'am, for bringing that up, I told you.
So I believe we go through monitoring of each of the detailed policies, and then we circle back and do the monitoring of the overall policy? Is that how we do this?
Yeah, I think you could do the one that we had in question, you know.
And in compliance would be no, but compliance acceptable.
So I, I think you probably can just go right through this and.
Okay.
Right, right through all of them.
From the top, okay.
From the top, yeah.
So, policy two-point-four, financial condition and activities. With respect to the actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the superintendent shall not cause or allow the development of financial jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in N's policies. Reasonable interpretation?
This is overall policy?
This is the overall policy.
Usually, yeah, I think.
And that's what it said, so I thought we'd do the details first and then we circle.
Yeah, I missed, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's exactly what you asked.
Testing you, Bridgette.
That's what I said, okay. All right, so detail policy number one. The superintendent shall not expend more funds than have been received or budgeted in the fiscal year to date. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
No.
No. Compliance plan acceptable?
Yes.
Yes. Number two, incurred debt in an amount greater than can be repaid by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within ninety days. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Compli, uh, no, compli, um, number three, use any long-term reserves. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number four, conduct inter-fund shifting in amounts greater than can be restored to a condition of discrete fund balances by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within thirty days. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Yes.
Number five, fail to settle payroll and debts in a timely manner. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Yes.
Number six, allow tax payments or other government ordered payments or filings to be overdue or inaccurately filed. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number seven, make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than twenty-five thousand dollars or the addition of a point-five FTE teacher. Splitting orders to avoid this limit is not acceptable. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes. Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Yes.
Number eight, spend the prior year's undesignated fund balance. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Yes.
Number nine, fail to aggressively pursue receivables after a reasonable grace period. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Yes. Number ten, accept non-resident tuition students unless tuition is being paid by other Vermont school districts or the state. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
And so then the overall policy, with respect to the actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the superintendent shall not cause or allow the development of financial jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in N's policies. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes. Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes. In compliance? Technically, no, because of one of the details. And then, compliance plan acceptable? Yes.
Yes.
There you have it.
Great, thank you, sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. So, moving on to policy two-point-eight, compensation and benefits.
Yeah, I think we can, this, unless there's some significant questions, I think this is pretty straightforward, and we've warned it for action as well. Again, we can kind of walk through this, but these are limitations regarding the superintendent's compensation changes, promise or, or imply permanent or guaranteed employment. Number two, establish or change compensation benefits that deviate materially from the current agreements. And then, four, create obligations over a longer term than revenues can safely project. So, there's evidence in there, I don't, I mean, I'm happy to, we've attached the appropriate appendices, can walk you through that if you'd like. Again, my current contract is there, which you've previously approved, so again, it's pretty, pretty consistent with, I think we've done in the past. So, I don't know, Bridgette, what you, what would be your pleasure?
Did anyone have any questions or comments on this one? Yeah, it looked very straightforward to me. Martin, did you have any questions with that?
I just wanna make sure I didn't miss something.
And Mark did anything, yeah.
Well, well, the contributions for the defined benefit versus the defined contribution plan, where, is, is there?
Yep, that.
Am I missing this somewhere?
Page four of five, yeah.
Yeah, I see that, but as far as, is, is there any, I think in the past we had something just to show where the two were headed trend-wise. Oh, that was in two-four, okay.
Yeah, I think two-four gives you a, a higher detail to the defined benefit plan. This is sort of an overall, I think it gives you just a couple of the numbers, the contributions, and maybe, yeah, the, the actual details of the pension and defined contribution actually lie in that two-point-four.
I must've overlooked that part.
And because they were at the similar timeframe, you probably remember seeing maybe one.
Yeah, it was just that, I, I think in the past we just wanted to look and see where the defined benefit contributions were relative to the defined contributions since we made that change five or six years ago.
Yeah, in twenty-eleven.
So, that's, that's fine.
This, again, is focusing on making obligations or significant changes, and, and again, that, certainly the, the activity of those particular funds over time are important, but that's not what this particular two-point-eight compensation and benefits are talking about. It's, it's mostly about the restrictions of the superintendent to make those changes.
Yeah. So with that, are we ready to take action on this? Okay. So, detail policy one, the superintendent shall not change the superintendent's own compensation and benefits. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes. Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes. In compliance?
Yes.
Number two, promise or imply permanent or guaranteed employment. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data? In compliance?
Yes.
Number three, establish or change compensation and benefits that deviate materially from the geographical or professional market median for the skills employed. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data? Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number four, create obligations over a longer term than revenues can safely be, or be safely projected, in no event longer than one year and in all events, subject to losses in revenue. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes. Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Number five, establish or change pension benefits. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
So then the overall policy reads, with respect to employment compensation and benefits to employees, consultants, contract workers, the superintendent shall not cause or allow jeopardy to financial integrity or to public image. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes. Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right. That brings us to number 11, review proposed Vermont School Board Association Resolutions Discussion. This, we voted to give Elizabeth, to make Elizabeth our proxy to vote on resolutions at the meeting tomorrow, but we had not actually seen the resolutions themselves, so we just need to, I just need to know if anyone has any comments or thoughts for Elizabeth. I don't know if we want to walk through either of these documents, if anyone had any questions about specific ones. Usually, Martin used to give us a very detailed thought process behind all of them because he was on the board. We don't have that benefit this year.
I did read through these very closely, though.
Yeah.
And generally, I would imagine that we're going to likely, or we should go along with whatever the recommendation of the, of the, of the V S B A board. And it's, there was one that kind of jumped out that seemed like, oh, well, that seems like a good idea. Why do they want it to not pass? And that has to do with, I'm just trying to find it, it had to do with the, looking at the costs.
Of social services?
Of social services.
That's number two, from the River Valley Technical Center, School District.
And the reason why that, well, they almost certainly have good reason, but I suspect it's because there's already a resolution that goes to that in, in the, so the one
The one with the black line, S P S.
document that we have are the resolutions that have been passed before, and there already is a resolution that says, don't, or that, let me see if I can find it.
That's where I was a little bit confused about, Martin, you said these are the ones that have been passed before, and it says 2018, 2019, but then at the bottom, they've edited that to be 2019, 2020.
Carrying forward.
And there were some yellow marks in here.
Right.
That were updating them.
Yeah.
So I was confused that, I understood the ones with the board on the front, the list of board members, to be the ones that were proposed by school districts.
Right.
And the one, the V S B A resolutions were the ones that the V S B A itself had proposed.
Right, is proposing, right, correct.
Okay. And so these are the ones they're proposing for this year?
These are, it's only what you see in the highlighted, that.
Are changes.
There are changes to the resolutions that already guide what they do.
Okay.
Those resolutions continue on until they're modified or.
Martin, Bridget?
Yeah.
Can I say on proposal number two, this, you know, it resolves that they direct the Agency of Education to conduct a detailed survey by district, but that information is already collected by the Agency of Education. You just have to query out the details dedicated towards social services, so it would be a redundant thing and repeat itself unnecessarily if it were to be done.
So that may be why they, yeah.
Because the data's already there. You just need to take someone to write the query to get it, and you can break it out by school district, supervise reunion, whichever way you want. It's already there.
Right. And there already is, and I just can't seem to find it. You would have thought I would have put a little star by it when I was looking at it, but I didn't. There's already something that also talks about social services in, in schools. So that, yeah, so that's the only one that had jumped out at me is, well, that looks reasonable. Why do they say not pass?
Can I make a general comment?
There's two reasons now, yeah.
Yeah, it would be useful if there was a, even just a one-sentence explanation following the recommendation, such as, this is redundant, or this would, this would be micromanaging the school districts too far, or anything.
Right.
Even if it's just a matter of opinion.
Yeah, and they do do that at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
At the meeting, when they go over, they explain, you know, that our recommendation was do not pass, and this is the reason, so.
Right.
But yeah, it would, it would be kind of helpful.
Yeah.
For, for school boards in advance of the meeting, and I can suggest that to them.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they have to do that.
And Martin, I'm sorry to keep calling on you as the expert, but one question I had was, there are some just small, like typo-type things in the V S B A ones that aren't highlighted as possibly being changed this year. At this stage of the game, do those just sort of end up being passed the way they are, or is it?
Are these the ones that have been suggested or already in?
These are the ones that are already in the S B, uh, V S B A, so for example, letter O, cost containment. It talks about contracts that expire in 2019. So it sort of seems like it's an out-of-date.
Right.
Date.
Right. Not a typo, but an oversight, certainly.
That's an oversight one. And then later on, on page seven, I think they mean under C, I think they mean E S A, Ever Student Succeeds Act, instead of E S E A. That is just a typo.
Right.
But I, I didn't know if those were the kind of things that they would be willing to change at this stage, or if it's so far down the path, since they're having a meeting tomorrow, that it's too late to.
No, it's not necessary. I'll act like I was really paying attention, and then I caught those two things, and I'll, I'll bring it up.
Awesome. Okay.
For bioeducation, since you know so much about this, on page eight. H, the school calendar, is that an effort to get towards year-round school?
Uh, let's see, H.
Uh, page eight, though.
Page eight, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just above the liberalizations. The school calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
Opportunities, you know.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. I'm not, the other thing is that it's interesting that it might be, it would probably be helpful if they actually had a date in for when these were adopted.
Yeah, so have these just sort of accreted over the years?
Because they do get, they do get rid of some, they strike some that no longer are relevant.
Yeah, I think the school calendar issue is a lot about tech centers, because when you have a kid who's got regular high school, but the tech center's closed, or vice versa, it kind of ruins the day for that kid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's, but there's requirements for whatever sending, like, we're a district that sends to the two tax, Essex and Burlington. We have to have a like-aligned calendar that shares common days, right? We have to have an adopted calendar based on the law. These innovation zones and the school calendar piece, again, I'm not able to give you all of the history of that, but, you know, I think from innovation zones to looking at, opening that up a little bit more and not having to be bound to the law that currently governs the calendar, for instance, you know, is, is what they're highlighting a little bit here.
Cool, okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily saying that they want a longer school year, but it's vague enough that it would allow them to argue.
See whatever you want, suppose.
Which is part of it as well.
Yeah.
Essentially, what this, this guides what the V S B A does on our behalf. It guides what they do as far as lobbying or helping out the legislature, as well as at the state school board and the Agency of Education. That's kind of what this is for, is to have the membership explain what, what we want them to do and not do, so.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would think that, tell Elizabeth that, no, we're not going to vote or anything on this, and we've given her the proxy to act on our behalf, but I, you know.
Yeah.
So if there's some awesome argument for one of those.
We trust your judgment, you and Elizabeth.
It's very unusual that, that the ones that the board has, that their recommendation is not followed. Very unusual. What might happen is, you know, bring it back again next year with these modifications kind of thing, so.
Okay. So if no one has any further comments on that, I guess we're up to item 12, negotiations updates. I don't think we have a whole lot of update other than what we did earlier in the meeting, which is vote to ratify the contract with the South Burlington Administrators Association, and just to say that we are sort of in the pre, pre, pre-planning stages of the next round of negotiations, and also watching the work in Montpelier on Act 11 with regard to the statewide healthcare, and starting to think about the next round, which will have to start soon, but there are no official dates in the calendar for any of the three negotiations that we'll have to do this year, but that will be starting soon.
I think it's pre, pre, not pre, pre, pre.
Okay, only pre, pre, only two, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, thanks for the correction. All right, any other thoughts on negotiations? No, we'll just leave it as a standing item because we are going to be back in the thick of it pretty soon. Item 13, other paper articles. I didn't see in our packet, is there anything in our place?
No, no, yeah.
It's better up for me.
Is it for you?
Yeah.
And do you remember what we had said was going to be your topic?
I believe it's finance mechanisms for the bond.
If we, if we know enough by then, are we going to know enough by then?
If we know enough by then, I.
It may be that we.
I don't think we're going to have a fruitful article on that at that stage. I think we'll be playing with scenarios, probably, with the financial advisor, but I don't, I don't think that we're going to know what the proposed financing mechanism is by the time that article's due.
Yeah, well, what would you all think if I put a, put something together in more general terms about bonding?
Meaning.
What do you think?
I, I think that it might confuse the issue unless it was really clear about sort of options that we were thinking about, or, or plans that we were thinking about, and I'm just not sure that we're going to know that at that stage.
Mm-hmm. So maybe a different sub.
It may be better to do, it may be better to just, I mean, we're about to enter into budget season. Factors in play, I, I don't know, I guess we, I probably need to revisit what we've done in the past now, and I wonder what might be a good.
Well, is there.
We're starting to walk into, you know, the budgeting, we've got student, a little bit of student outcomes.
Well, I guess the question I'd have is, is there another subject that we need to get information out on the master plan and envisioning that we're prepared at this point?
Nothing's coming immediately to mind for me.
I'm not sure that anything's coming to mind for me.
You know, 180 market, you know, you know, what people should know, I mean, just trying to think about what would be, I'm, I'm just kind of drawing a blank at the moment, maybe we can brainstorm here a bit, but.
Yeah, because this, this article would have to go in, assuming it would have to go in the week of Thanksgiving, yeah, in order to be in that first week of December paper. We do have one more meeting before that, and we do have a very short, very short window of time to write that article, but.
Budget timeline here.
But it might make sense to revisit topics for, at the next meeting.
Yeah, because even if we're, we're in the throes of budget development.
Yeah.
I'm not doing a good job thinking about what we could.
Well, one question, this is a totally different topic, is I know that families started to get S back results today in the mail. I don't know if we will have anything to say on a district level at that stage about results, or not, or if that's a topic that we need to save until Mike has a, a sort of thorough analysis of the overall direction of those.
Could be.
But it's, it's an idea, because people will definitely be asking questions about it and.
Yep.
And all that.
Let me circle back, I'll send some ideas out to the whole board, and I need to spend a little more thinking time. I mean, we have a lot going on chronologically, and again, you're highlighting what we have coming back. What are some of the other things, you know, that might be helpful for a board article? You know, we've got inclement weather, we've got, you know, a variety of things coming up around just activities with our students, change in some of our work with A O E and how we, you know.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that we're making the best use of it, and I, I don't have any brilliant ideas at the moment, so, so maybe we should punt that until the next board meeting, or potentially just, yeah.
So, so have we done an article on special education funding and what's happening with that?
Act 173, you could approach some of the legislative overviews. Act 173, yep, that could be a, a funding model conversation, yep, could be helpful. I worry about, you know, getting so specific to special education and fears that it shines a little too much on that particular area, but it could be a funding, a little bit of funding in some of the acts that are cha, that are affecting that maybe.
So have we done anything, I don't recall if we've, on what we're doing for trauma-informed
Practice.
Practice. And that's a very relevant issue.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I don't recall that we've done a column on that.
I don't think we have, not that.
And just getting an update on what we've been doing, I know we had a pilot, has that rolled out? We haven't talked about it in a little while.
Mm-hmm. What was the other one? My brain's, that, what was the one we talked about just a second ago?
The special education thing, special education 173.
That's terrible.
I think it'd be very helpful to talk about trauma, that's just me, I don't know if that's something.
Well, let me see what we have, and then Alex is up for the article, so I'll connect with Joanne Godak in the morning and see, you know, what, what her thoughts are and push someone, push that back out.
Okay, yeah, I do like the trauma-informed practices.
Yeah.
I think we don't have to get into the, the legislation of special ed funding, and that, that's kind of in the weeds, so to speak. But I think people can relate.
I know it's closing in on your heart that changing horses would be okay.
Changing horses?
That's a topic.
Oh, changing, oh, you mean.
Going from funding mechanisms to trauma.
Yeah, well, I think, I think funding this mechanism would, you know, connect with the public a little bit less than being able to relate to how you help kids who have been hurt in school.
Right, right.
So.
Well, hopefully they haven't been hurt in school, they. Hey, kids hurt when they, not in school, but outside of school when they get to school.
I know what you meant.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'll clarify it.
Yeah, thanks.
Like, just guidance counselors?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
Yeah, so what do we, that's good, Delaney, what we, what we currently offer. Again, I think there's a multitude of supports out there. Primarily, obviously, we have school nurses, we've got guidance people, we've got clinicians that are attached to us from, like, the Howard Center.
Yeah.
In various schools, we've got administrators, classroom teachers, so a lot of folks are, again, being trained to be able to be observant and be available through relationships with students all the way through.
But how about your perspective?
But there was a specific pilot that was meant to, and we approved F T E to help with that pilot in terms of training classroom teachers, especially at the elementary level, to change their teaching practices, their everyday teaching practices, just the regular classroom teachers, to just be more aware of students with trauma and, and sort of really reflect on, on practices that might be more inclusive or might speak better to students that have trauma in their backgrounds. And so we haven't really had a full accounting of how that pilot went and how fast it's pulled out to other schools, and, you know, and, and what the impact of that has been so far, because it really was meant to be a pilot to see if it was something we wanted to, to roll out more broadly.
Right. And also a component of it was just the health of the teachers, you know, dealing And also a component of it was just the health of the teachers, you know, dealing with this on a daily basis, so. Yeah, I think that'd be a good one.
Thoughts from you, that you have from the high school perspective?
I haven't really, I've seen social services, um, from the Howard Center, but I haven't really seen clinicians. Like, I've talked to most of the guidance counselors and Howard Center people and the nurses, because-
Yeah, sorry, I'm talking like our school psychologists, we have some, and most of them are available to, to help assist, you know, depending on where, where students are, um, and you probably wouldn't see them necessarily, they're not necess- they're, they're usually appropriately and respectfully kind of providing the service when needed in the most confidential way, you know, and support to the families, but it is an available resource. Again, part of what you're asking is, over time, this has been a while that we've been at it and, you know, trauma has been something that we've definitely seen an uptick in, and as a result, we've been trying to, you know, ensure that, one, can we recognize it, when we do recognize it, what is, what are the best methodologies to apply so that we can help them the most appropriately remain in the classroom or supported in the classroom in, in what we say often is the least restrictive, right, to, to exclude children and put them in one location is not what we're looking to do if we can help regulate the behavior and deal with the, some of the traumas that are currently going on for that particular child. So that's been a lot of our, kind of the strategies, but I, I think would be good maybe to, this is maybe a good, good opportunity to give a little more, you know, highlight to some of the work that we're doing, yep.
Yeah, I, I would look forward to, um, hearing about, more about the pilot and how that's going.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, item fourteen, set the agenda for the November twenty, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting.
Where, where is it?
Uh, it-
I usually tap it, but I lost.
I've got it here, if you might, okay.
I got it, just found it.
Um, one thing I noticed, that master plan and visioning is going to take a lot more time than fifteen minutes. So, that's going to end up being quite a long meeting, I think, because that will be a big presentation.
So what do you think, an hour there, maybe?
Yeah, I think we're going to need an hour to present that plan, and I, I think we should also just do what we can to really try to get more people to come, I mean, it's really the last meeting with the design in it, um, before people go away for the holidays and-
Maybe they can be plugged at the elementary schools Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, I think of the P T O meetings, but I, I'm, I'm wondering whether we should put an ad in the other paper or something to that effect, just to make sure that people understand it's being presented, it's going off to the cost destiner, it would be a great time if you want to get more involved to come and pay attention.
So you probably have to get ahold of the other paper relatively quickly.
Yep.
Yeah, we're, we're, uh, we're good at that, well, when I say we're good at that.
It would need to be in next week's paper tomorrow.
Which means really we have to get ahold tomorrow.
Yeah, this tends to be our, our, our M O that we decide on Wednesday night, that we need an ad to go in for next week's paper and then we, um, then we push it, but usually if we tell them that we're going to have ad space, they may give us, you know, forty hours or something to-
We usually connect with Judy Kearns.
As long as they know how much space it is, they can reserve it for us and, and all that, so I think, I think we should go ahead and do that unless anyone has any objections to that, just to make sure people are aware of the opportunity.
And, and getting it on front porch for them.
Okay, yes, Alex.
Yeah, um, on number ten, I'd like to request an update on two four one, e- even if you want to include it in the superintendent's report.
Two four one.
Two four one, the deficit.
The one that we talked about today.
The one that we've talked about today. If, if there's anything you can update me on.
Okay.
Um, it, I'm not yet losing sleep over it, but, um-
Concerned.
It's, it's, I'm very concerned and it, I get a lot of, I'm, I feel a lot of worry about it.
Yeah, it would be more super intense report.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, because we've, we've monitored that policy, but yeah, we could put it certainly-
Okay, so if you could- Okay, yeah, please, please, thank you, David.
Mm-hmm. So you've taken care of two point eight.
Yes, so we can take that off.
Take that off, good.
And you see, we're trying to stick with our board calendar, we've got budget in here, I, I will, I will be asking for some direction from you all around what your kind of brackets are, guardrails are around, as I put the budget together, what's kind of your desired area to be in, you know, what percent increase, I mean, you're, you're going to give me for some guidance.
So the usual bullet points that you ask for to kind of give you some kind of starting point to start to, yes.
Again, it's helpful for me to be able to have at least this conversation, I think all of you, and we'll get into this when we talk about this in this agenda item, but you, you, you all know there's a fair amount of variability that exists in this particular budget, some of which we highlighted before with um, some of the things going on at A O E, but we also have some things that are going to add to that, right, we're going to, we've got a revenue shortfall, we're going to need to include, we've got, you know, um, conditions related to bonding and what that might begin to look like, and how we'll go about doing that, we've got to be able to cover our expenses currently that we've devoted to door and wittier, financial advisor, pre-construction service and communications. Again, if the budget passes in the bond, then that can be repurposed, if it doesn't, we've got to carry it. So we've got these kind of, you know, scenarios where we have to be in agreement that it's likely going to have some upward pressure on the whole budget, um, with the unknowns about what will happen in March, right, so. But, bottom line is, I just, I need a little bit of guidance, um, or, or maybe a lot of guidance around what you're thinking, you know.
And what is your timeline for, do you do that before this meeting?
No, I think this meeting, I think this meeting is good, you know, we've got, um, our citizens budget advisory meeting, actually, that's either meeting the night before or the night after, I, I forget, um, we've got, you know, meetings scheduled with that group, and we've got a really, we've gotten a lot of responses to that group lately, um, so we're, we're excited about that group and it's pretty diverse, so we're, we're hopeful for that, but that's usually where we kind of kick it off with them too and get a little bit of a test from them, what do they think, which kind of goes along with kind of doing a little litmus test of where the board is too. I, I don't know, let's, I think, I'm saying it now to let your kind of brains turn a little bit.
Yeah, that's great.
I'll think about it during, you know, when I'm in the hunting blind that night.
Exactly.
Sorry, I won't be here next, uh-
Okay.
Yeah.
But you'll be watching, you'll be streaming live on your phone in the-
You know, it's just so sad that I don't get the reception out there.
You know what you could do is you could call them, because you know, as phone rings is a dot call, right?
Right.
So it might be, we're calling him and then he might have-
It'll be dear honey, no, so that'll help me once, why?
No, that will hurt. Okay.
Okay, so executive negotiations, negotiations, other paper articles.
City schools on there, I'm probably forgetting something.
These are some big items, I, I don't feel like we need to add a whole lot of other things to that agenda.
I think you should do as much as you can do, you know, as much as possible.
Close out the year.
Clear out the year's work so that it's all done, you get back.
All four of you guys doing it.
Awesome, okay, um, so that is item fourteen, item fifteen, future agenda items.
So I'd just like to add one, I, I'd like to get more information on, uh, early college, how, how much participation we're seeing, what the trends are, and even just an update of what it is all about, because we haven't heard that much about it here, we've heard a lot about, uh, being able to take some classes, uh, but not-
Not as much early college, yeah. Delaney, do you know people who are taking advantage of the
Yeah, actually.
Early college?
A lot of my friends are doing-
That are seniors?
Yeah, they're going to be doing it next year and, well, the juniors are going to be doing it next year and I have a lot of senior friends that are taking advantage.
More than you, more, you think that's an increasing number, or what do you?
I think that, I don't think that it's greatly increasing, I think that I've, I wasn't expecting there to be as many people taking advantage of it, but, um, I think mainly the people that are taking advantage of it are people that are also taking advantage of tech center and stuff like, yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, just getting that kind of information and trends and what the impact is and what we're doing here, so.
I have two items that have been, have come up in more than one conversation, well, more than one conversation, um, with parents and you know, I, these are tricky because it, I'm totally stepping in it with regard to policy governance, but one of the questions that keeps coming up is math and, and sort of a review of what we're doing with math. And I know that some parents have met with Mike Martin already, but there have been other parents who have been asking me about high school math curriculum as well as, I don't hear a lot honestly about middle school, but I hear a lot about high school and I hear a lot about, um, elementary and sort of a review of whether we're happy with bridges, you know, and I, I know that Mike had said at some point he was planning to do more of a discussion with us about the overall curriculum and, you know, his, his thoughts about where it is. I just feel like our policy, um, monitoring on that tends to focus the very high level of whether there are curriculum in place, because that's what's, you know, what we're monitoring you on, but these are just some things that are coming up from the community that I think they would like to hear more about, um, what our administration and, you know, maybe what our faculty are thinking about our math curriculum and how we place kids in it and, and, you know, whether we're getting, uh, the results we want from sort of the integration of the different math subjects at the high school level.
Fair question.
Um, and then the other one that has come up a lot is, um, tech in the classroom and how we're using it and whether the use is appropriate. Technology. Technology, and whether it's being used really to support, um, curriculum effectively, or whether it's being used more, um, for ways that are maybe, you know, less supportive of the curriculum and, and whether there just needs to be more thought about that, and I know that was something that Mike was talking about, talking to us at some point in the future, so that's why I think it probably fits under future agenda items, um.
Okay.
Yeah, since we still are putting a lot of money, making a big investment, the one to one in technology, it would be a bad idea to have an update.
Yep.
We did it the first few years, after rolling that out, but.
Got it, got them.
Okay. Any other future agenda items, thoughts on future agenda? Okay, um, hearing none, um, number sixteen, consider the minutes of the meetings of October fifteenth, October sixteenth, and October twenty eighth. I only, I think when I review them, I only noted one small one, which was there was the special meeting on October fifteenth, which preceded our, um, community input session on master planning and visioning, the only thing I noted was Alex was not at that one and he was listed as being there, so I just went to-
Twenty eight, twenty eight.
No, was it the twenty eighth? Oh, yes, it was the twenty eighth, it was the twenty eighth, that's right.
I was not there, that should be an unexcused absence.
No, I just wanted to make sure that the minutes were appropriate, that they reflected who was there and who was not, so I didn't mean to call you out, but I just wanted to make sure the minutes were reflected.
No, that's fine, I don't want any special treatment.
Um, I don't believe I had any other changes, the twenty eighth of October.
That was on the-
Yes.
Uh, stupid little change, October sixteenth, page five, all are in favor, a motion passes, so we need a capital C in there.
Oh, I did see that, and I skipped that one, I was like, you know.
We're getting picky, you know.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, no, hey, that, just like I'm going to use that tomorrow to make it look like I really reviewed it closely.
Throwing all your eyes.
So, I believe the minutes for those three means are approved with those two small changes.
Yep.
Um, item seventeen, the consent agenda, um, there are bids, uh, there's, I know it's a consent agenda, I did have one quick question, there's only one bid, one for the, one, the nine-passenger minivan for schools out, my question was whether that was in the budget for this year?
No, so this is again through Schools Out, which is the enterprise fund.
Okay.
So they are, they generate revenue through their enrollment and part of what we find is the need to move kids around at a time when buses are most active, right, so end of the day, elementary students are, are moving, although we have buses, we, our buses are out deploying, so this is in part why Schools Out has needed some additional transportation needs.
Oh, actually, I hate to go back if I can though, future agenda items, um, buses in general. I've sort of had a sidebar conversation with Gary about it and I think we need to, buses, um, bus drivers, basically, and, and staffing of that and, um, I think there needs to be a bigger brainstorm about what we can do to ensure that there's appropriate staffing.
There's your letter, asking for drivers.
Yeah.
Pretty please!
Best job!
Well, I think it goes deeper than, yeah, there are a lot of reasons why we don't have enough and, and why we're having trouble with staffing, and I think that at some point, it's, it's kind of gotten to the point where we probably need to talk about it.
Yeah, we have had sidebars in the neighborhood too, so, yeah.
Well, because of lateness, right, or, or drop offs and-
Well, it's a lot of combined routes this year, which means a long time on the bus for kids and, and a lot of late or early in some cases, sometimes you get an email in the morning saying your bus is going to be early, and that's, that's a bit of a challenge for, for families, and, and the struggle is that we want to make sure that, you know, we're trying to encourage people to use the buses, it's, it's more efficient, it's, you know, better for the environment, it's better for the community not to have all those cars on it. It's better for, obviously, at, at Rick Markcott with all the construction that's going on, it's better to have more kids on the bus, but if we can't be reliable with the bus, it's really hard for families to make that decision to, to be on the bus, so, yeah, so.
Well, I just wasn't sure if that was an inability to staff issue or if that was a making up for a budget shortfall issue, you know.
Oh, there's two things, two things, I mean, and we, we don't need to go into great depth, but the two things. We have, we've been full with our drivers, although substitute drivers, because you've got to account for people who are going to be out for an appointment or sick, um, and then the other part is particularly during the fall season, um, where we have all of the activities going on, so when we have the deployment of, whether it's frisbee, football, you know, soccer, field hockey, you know, all of those events are pulling, and so we're all, we're, we're trying to almost say yes to too much.
Right.
Where they're all important and we want to be able to get students from here to there at that time, and remember, our, our end times are often start times for other schools for activities, so it's competitive with our bus, um, you know, routing. And so that's, that's where it happens, so we need to have six buses to get our co-curricular kids out, at the same time, we've got to transport our, our middle, our elementary run.
Right.
And so what happens is we pull three off of there and, and, and hope that we can get kids home and get them back, um, or consolidate the elementary run, take those buses and push them to the co-curricular side, and that's not, that's not a good, good remedy. Again, anytime, again, my feeling is anytime there's significant changes in who's picking you up, who, you know, who, who's dropping you off, and if there's a significant change in time, that's problematic, right? I'd almost rather that you, where we set a standard time, and if that elongates your ride time by five minutes, you know, then that's better than playing bus change order every other day, because again, kids get used to their driver, they get used to their route, moms and dads and guardians get used to them as well and can plan accordingly to say, I've planned a meeting for acts and now the bus is going to be, you know, ten minutes into my meeting, it creates stress, you know, so, anyway, I don't know, Delaney, do you have, do you ride, do you ride actually the Georgia bus at all?
I ride the Georgia bus sometimes, yeah, um, but what I've noticed recently is almost every day we have bus changes for South Burlington and it's like a lot, like, it's, it's a lot of changes too and it's almost every single day.
Yeah. One of the things that we see is the, you know, false period of time, all these activities going on and then, phew, those drop. Right, because, when, again, we don't have a lot of programs currently running, this kind of ends between now and then the, the, when we come back from the holidays usually, and then it gets busy again, winter sports, you know, but-
We're going to have to think about it carefully as we look forward to master planning and visioning if we're going to build on our athletic fields and have to move kids to other places to have more away games and practices, that we're going to have to make sure that we're on top of staffing and bus numbers so that we can manage all that, because it will increase for a couple of years.
That's a good point.
David, were you mostly joking about writing an article about school, the school bus situation?
No, I, I mean, I, I don't think that's the right approach, but, I mean, part of me-
We need to have a conversation about it and brainstorm some solutions.
We've, we've got a lot of people that would, you know, generally retired population, timeframeing, a lot of people don't realize that, you know, they're driving from essentially seven until nine, and then they're off until two until four thirty or something like that, right? And, um, the opportunity for people to have that, who have, have kids, that, that may, that may be a, a real interest, um, and sometimes people are like, oh, I never knew that, you know, so are we, do we get that word out? I think we do, but that's why I'm a little bit always pushing on kind of the communication part of it.
Sorry, I, I let us get off track, I brought us off track, um, so-
The bus is doing a lot of many events.
Yeah, yeah, so many events, so, so what you're saying is that it is part of the Schools Out management of their program and their bottom line, so they sort of have control over both their revenues and their expenses and this is something that they've decided is necessary, given our bus situation.
And they have the revenue.
Yep.
And, um, this is an important component to carry out the program.
Okay. Uh, item eighteen, accounts payable orders sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, did anyone have any questions or comments about those?
I'm sorry to say I do have one question, so.
Sure.
It was on number eighteen, page eleven, I just wanted to know what the school reform initiative was, I mean, no problem with the payments, I was just curious.
Yeah, and I'm going to have to take a guess at, and I-
And, yeah, and if the question gets delayed, that's fine.
You're on, uh-
Which page are you on?
Page are you on?
This is page number eleven of, uh, order number eighteen.
Order eighteen, page eleven.
Is that what it is?
Thank you, Meg. Eighteen, page eleven. You're pretty sure of that, uh, Meg? Page eleven.
It's page eleven of, of, uh, order number eighteen. And most of the stuff I can just figure out what it was and that one I couldn't figure out, so, the school reform initiative.
Yeah, it's, um-
It looks like conference registration fees or-
Is this the Roland, is this the Roland conference? What's that? S E I? It's the, yeah, so this is actually where they're at right now, we've got four people attending.
Oh, nice, like a pedagogy conference at least?
Yeah, and so it's actually, um, practices around how to help bring about change, you know, um, protocols, proceed, those types of things, and so we've got people at that particular conference right now.
Very cool. Yeah, thank you both.
It's got an acronym that I'm forgetting, right, it's S, S R I, so, well, I guess, I guess that's, could be easily-
Not too judgy, yeah.
Easily evaluated, so it's usually, yeah, S R I, okay, thanks, Meg.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Nope. Uh, number nineteen, accounts payable order checks to Howard Center for Human Services, um, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents, and the Heart Works, Steamworks, and Love Works Schools in the amount of fifty-one thousand, uh, thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
I move that we approve the accounts payable orders that you just explained.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I move that we approve.
I second that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.